Everyone, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We actually started at 6:30 with an executive session, but we're going to call the 7:00 PM session of the Board of Ed Work Session this evening, Monday, February 7th. I would ask you all to stand, please, for the pledge. I'd like to point out the exits that are behind the audience and behind us here in front. And I would like to introduce our CCHS Jazz Combo for our listening pleasure this evening. Mr. Hoover, would you like to introduce your team to us?
Good evening. This is the CCHS Jazz Combo. We meet once a week after school. It's a student-led group. It's currently not a club, and we're currently pushing to make it an elected club in the future. So, that being said, we have Robert Wilhelm on the trombone. We have Josh Wozniak on trombone, Sam Wozniak on trombone, Jonathan Archangel on piano and tenor sax, Henry Wiley on bass. We got the guitar man over there, Shane Bywater. We have Garcia Warren on trumpet, Jenna Lindquist on trumpet, James Tucker on tenor sax, and Morgan Hill on alto sax, as well as George Bailey on drums, and Oliver Jang on drums as well. They all chose all the music for this evening. They rehearsed everything themselves. I just gave them a room to play in and a couple tips and advice, and that was all them. So, nice job, guys.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for joining us this evening. You are all amazing. Thank you so much. Before the meeting as well.
Just going to give them another minute to clear out, and then we're going to do some more celebration of our amazing students. All right, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Revinsky, Mr. Piazza, and Mr. Hoover to recognize our all-state and all-national selections. So, take it away, gentlemen.
Good evening. I do know how to work one of these things. Different building, different environment, but they're all the same. Those of you who do not know me, my name is Tony Revinsky. I'm the music coordinator for K-12. And as you all met, Mr. Hoover, the band director over there. Mr. France would love to be with us, but he's in a booth right now at Lee Road with our little K-4s prepping for this weekend. So, he was unfortunately not able to make this. Before I read about these awesome kids, I want to bring them down here just so you can see their faces as I talk about them. The following list are our all-state musicians this year, which is the longest list I've ever had since I've been here for the last 20 years. So, can the following people please come on down? Jonathan Archangel, Benjamin Carter, Natalie Salantano, Victor Perez, Caleb Sandler, Joshua Wozniak, and Samuel Wozniak. So, come on down, ladies and gentlemen. These students, they need a pan to a camera. What camera are we on? This one? That one? Thank you, Stingle. These students are all of our all-state musicians this year. And I want to read some facts about what they did and how they got here. In the spring of 2021, we all remember this so long ago, approximately 4,500 sophomores and juniors from around New York State did a NISMA solo in hopes for being considered for a spot in one of the all-state honors ensembles. These solos are extremely challenging and typically would be performed by a college-level musician. Of these 4,500 students from around the state, only 490 were selected to participate in one of these ensembles with a list of 700 alternates from around the state. Because of COVID this year, there was only 50% of the ensembles that ran. So, the odds were even harder to get into an ensemble this year because of the COVID regulations up at all-state. With that said, tonight in Cornwall is happy to announce eight of our high school students who were recognized as all-state musicians. Again, as I mentioned earlier, this is the largest group of musicians we've been able to honor in Cornwall since I've been here in the last 20 years. And typically, some districts, and we're very fortunate to get one or two in every year. So, this is outstanding for our department. All of these students, yeah, you can clap. That was a huge, huge honor, huge recognition. All of these students, all of these students have gone above and beyond what Mr. Hoover, Mr. France, and myself have asked. And they have all worked hard to prepare their solos the last spring virtually as they continue to be student leaders in our ensembles. Most importantly, many of these students are looking to pursue music in college, and some of them are hoping to be performers for a living. So, this is not just a hobby for them, which I think is really, really important to note. So, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to read to you what their achievements were. Jonathan Archangel was accepted into instrumental jazz program, and he was also a band alternate. Ben Carter was accepted into the mixed chorus. Natalie Salantano was accepted into the symphonic band. Victor Perez was a jazz band alternate. Caleb Sandler was an orchestra alternate. Joshua Wozniak was a band alternate. And Sam Wozniak was an instrumental jazz alternate. So, congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. This is an amazing honor. Thank you for working so hard. This is not an easy thing by any means, so. Okay. Thank you. So, we're going to, do you want to keep moving through? Because I do have one huge, one more huge thing. We do have an all-national, if that's okay. Mr. Hoover wants to talk about our all-national student, Mr. Jonathan Archangel.
So, all-national is a big deal, to put it lightly. It's the most difficult ensemble to, it's the highest accomplishment that an instrumentalist, a vocalist, can get within their schooling career. So, it's really rare for a school district to have one student in their program, and it's even more rare to have somebody partake in the jazz ensemble. All-national is an audition-based honors ensemble that is made up of the best musicians in the country. In order to be eligible for these groups, you must be selected to perform in your all-state music festival specific to your region, all within the 50 states. After you've been selected into all-state, you must go through an extensive audition process where you must prepare exceptionally difficult music excerpts and send in a recording. Thousands and thousands apply, and only a few make it in. So, this year, 533 students attended from 48 states. Among these 533 students are the highly-selected jazz ensemble, which was made up of only 20, 20 out of the entire country. And only five were from New York. Jonathan's audition went exceedingly well, and he was awarded first chair, tenor saxophone in the jazz ensemble. So, he was one of three tenors out of the entire state, I'm sorry, entire country, and he was the number one. This is the highest achievement that you can get, again, as a high school, as any musician in the schooling systems. I just really wanted to give you a breakdown of some of the other accomplishments he's had over the past seven, eight years here at Cornwall. So, he's participated in NISMA for the past, I think I counted, seven years. He's performed 11 solos, nine were perfect scores, and they all occurred within three different instruments and two different styles. So, jazz, classical, alto, tenor saxophone, and clarinet, too. And four of those were all-state solos. So, that's pretty exceptional. Over the past seven years, Jonathan has participated in all-county. He's performed in 11 all-county festivals, seven of which he was first chair. Over the past three years, he's participated in the past three New York State Band Directors Association All-State Festival in Syracuse in the jazz ensemble. It's a highly-select organization that's similar to all-state but focuses on band. And out of two of those three years, he was first chair. Jonathan, this year, like we talked about, was accepted into all-state. He was first chair, tenor saxophone in the jazz ensemble. But he also has a really impressive resume in the local community as well. So, he had, from 2016 to 19, he performed at the Hudson Valley Youth Jazz Orchestra. He's performed as a guest soloist with the West Point Cadet Art Showcase with the U.S. Military Academy. He's been a freelance musician for a variety of different things throughout the area. He's performed and been recorded with Richard Pavlidis on the Lockdown Sessions in 2021. And more notably, he also performed with the Jazz at Lincoln Center Youth Jazz Orchestra as first tenor and clarinet in 2021. On top of that, on top of that, he plays tenor saxophone. But as, to be a well-rounded musician, especially for saxophone, you have to be able to play all woodlands. That's just a standard. So, over the past four years, Jonathan has been honing his skills in concert band on flute, clarinet, bassoon, bass clarinet. He played a little alto saxophone as well, tenor saxophone. And in the CCH pit orchestra, he's also played entire books by himself, which is incredibly difficult. So, within one musical production, he would play flute, clarinet, saxophone, all that, switching back and forth. It's exceedingly difficult and usually left to the professionals, or we split it up between a few different people. So, he could do all at once. Jonathan really is a once-in-a-lifetime student, and we're really excited for him and his accomplishments this year and the past four years, and really just throughout his entire career here at Cornwall. So, congratulations, Jonathan, on your all-national achievement.
Thank you, Mrs. Brendan, Mr. Dave, for inviting us. I think they have a little something for you guys. I didn't mean to push you.
And can you leave your autographs at the door? I'm thinking, you know, in the next five, 10 years.
Several years. Oh, they'll be worth something.
Probably good money for those, yeah.
For sure. Margaret, you had most of them when they were younger, right? In crayon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you so much. Okay, and just before we get into our recognition of visitors, on behalf of the board and the district, we are pleased to inform everyone that the district and the Cornwall Central Teachers Association came to a conceptual agreement on a new collective bargaining agreement in a lengthy negotiation session last Wednesday. We are not at liberty to discuss the details as a memorandum of agreement still needs to be drafted and signed. And we wish to defer to the association for it to communicate any details to its members. However, we are pleased and believe this is a good step forward for us and the excellent teachers and nurses who serve our students. Moving on to public comments, recognition of visitors, the public may address the board at the times indicated on the agenda with the first opportunity being early in the meeting and the second opportunity later in the meeting. Each person is asked to speak into the microphone and identify himself or herself. Speakers are asked to limit comments to three minutes. The public comment period will have a 30-minute time allocation. We would ask that if the 30-minute mark is being reached, then comments be held until the final comment period later in the meeting. Please remember, there is no cross-discussing between persons or the board. Each speaker may speak once during each comment period. Please remember that personal attacks of any kind have no place in our community, district, or meetings, and only serve to create conflict and tear us apart at the exact moment when we should be coming together. Anything of this nature directed towards staff, students, or the community is unacceptable. So, at this point, anyone who wishes to address the board is asked to come forward. There are microphones, I believe, at either end of the tables, and there'll be another comment period at the end of the meeting. Okay, thank you. Move on to committee updates. Margaret?
So, I have two committees, the Orange County School Boards Association. We had a meeting last week. They gave us kind of the overview of the virtual Capitol Conference discussion of what had happened earlier that day. The major points was that NISMA is coming up with DEI trainings that will be able to be used as a resource by a lot of different school boards and school districts. So, that's a plus. And the tone in Albany, this was a big thing. The tone in Albany is way better than it was in that with this virtual conference, all of the attendees really felt that there was more of a positive tone, like a willingness to discuss things that were being brought up instead of what used to be. So, that was nice. I really, I heard a little bit more about Governor Hochul's Connect All Initiative, where she's working on providing internet for all students. And then the big thing is there's the virtual conference, the virtual meetings with our administrators that are coming up. So, specifically, if anybody from the board would like to participate, we have on February 10th at 4 o'clock, a meeting with James Scoofus. So, again, it's virtual, which just means you would sign on about 30 minutes earlier. Everybody kind of, you know, chats about the points that are being made, and then you go into the meeting. And again, on February 18th, with Colin Schmidt at 1 o'clock. And so, if, and they want to have people from their actual constituents that are part of it, which is why they reached out to us specifically for those two meetings. If you're interested, you can either let me know, or you can email me, and I'll pass it on to Karen Meyer, who's the guru for this whole thing. So, that's Orange County School Boards Association. Again, February 10th, which is in three days, at 4 o'clock, or the 18th at 1 o'clock. So, first come, first served. Get your notes in now. And then, as far as the visitation committee is concerned, we're working on getting dates for February and March. I know I had reached out to the team about dates that worked, and there was a miscommunication on my part in that I didn't realize I had to pass those on. I was thinking we'd just have a quick turnaround. So, in second reading of the email that I received, I totally dropped the ball. So, we're going to do February, March, and we'll talk more about whether Tuesdays and Thursdays are the best for you as they were before. So, but it's on the way, February, March. Look to see our smiling faces in the district. That's it. Do any other committees at this time? And Brendan probably will have an update. He's running late coming from the rehearsals at the high school. So, we'll give him a chance to update us when he gets here. Moving on to the consent agenda. Use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters. Is there any member of the board that wishes to pull out an item at this time?
Nancy asks number six.
Number six. Anyone else? Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda as submitted by the Superintendent of Schools, items 2 through 5. Do I have a motion?
Don't move it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Okay. Oh, did I miss that? Did I skip? Oh, my gosh, Sean, I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's good. Let's face it, we're on.
Okay, we're going to finish what we're on here.
No, we're saving the best for last. Come on.
Okay. Oh, my goodness. Okay. Number six. Internal Claims Auditor Resolution Resolved Upon the Recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education Does Hereby Increase the Annual Salary of Dan Martin District Internal Claims Auditor to $6,592, reflecting a 3% increase retroactive to December 8, 2021. Do I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
Discussion.
So, thank you, Nancy. What, sorry for the feedback. Harvey was kind enough to provide a rationale behind this. I'm not sure if that's going to be made public. And so, because I'm not sure of it, I'd ask just for that be explained here in the meeting because I think it's a very valid reason, and I just want to avoid any confusion or anything along those lines. So, if Harvey could explain why this is happening now, it'd be really helpful. Thank you.
Sure. So, Mr. Martin is our Internal Claims Auditor. He was hired on December 8th of 2021. I'm sorry, 2020. And whereas we typically, for those people, those individuals who are staff that are not part of any kind of a bargaining unit, we typically have their assessment and their increase at our reorg meeting or thereabouts, which is typically right around the July 1st timeframe. Mr. Martin started just six months ago. The board decided to wait until kind of like his one-year anniversary, kind of like a probationary period, to better evaluate and better assess his performance. He's done fabulous. He's done a great job. And why you're seeing it now is because December 8, 2021 was his one year. We are now coming forth with his increase. Sure.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you.
Oh, gosh, thank you. Well, then, will that mean those increases will continue on that schedule yearly? will continue on that schedule yearly at this time of year as opposed to at the reorg?
That's up to the board.
Okay. So we could get it back on track if we chose to? So we could get everybody on track as of?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I want to know because probably it's the best thing so that, you know, the board decides that to get it all on one schedule. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to turn it over to Sean now and I deeply apologize. Thank you so much.
So Megan is going to kind of tee us up because this is a two-part presentation and a lot involved in it. So we went to just make sure that Megan could provide a brief overview and then we'll send it over to Sean and Tina.
Sean, we'd just like to keep you there, like psych. All right. So tonight we have a technology update in two pieces because we do have two parts of the house for technology. We have our technology infrastructure and then we have our technology integration. So Sean Downasfaris here, he's our Director of Technology. He's going to be presenting us with updates on where we stand with our one-to-one initiative, next steps in the process, our infrastructure updates, and then successfully how they manage the day-to-day tech needs within our district. Then Tina is going to be joining us virtually. She's our Director of Data and Instructional Technology and she'll be presenting an update on our instructional technology plan, technology integration and action in our classrooms, which is always fun to see. You guys saw some examples of that. And upcoming professional development from our technology integration team. So just a quick little background to frame it for our Board of Ed members who weren't here the last go-around when we had to share out about our instructional technology plan at that time. It's part of the 100.12 Commissioners Regulations and it notes that New York State Public School Districts are required to develop and maintain instructional technology plans. So what does that mean? Basically, that NISIT's Office of Educational Design and Technology, they collect and review key information from districts for their instructional technology plans every three years. So all school districts are going through this right now. Our current plan ends at the end of June 2022 and then the new plan will go into place June 30 of 2022. Part of the process is through the District Instructional Technology Plan. We have to address how we're meeting the educational technology expectations of the Board of Regents and Tina will speak more to that. Also during Tina's update, she'll share the collaborative efforts of our District Technology Committee throughout the past months as we've worked to review the District Technology Committee goals as well as the 22, 25 instructional technology plan goals. There's a very specific timeline attached to this and Tina will share the various groups who will review it. And then after that work is done, it comes back to us and it's submitted to NISIT by June of 2022. And just as a point of reference for anyone who's wondering, the committee members, the representation of our student body, Board of Education, teachers and administrators, and for your purpose, Larry and Margaret represented you on the board. So Sean, it is your turn.
Okay. Good evening, Board members. I'm just going to give you a quick presentation about where we are with our network performance, with Chromebook one-to-one initiative and also how we're dealing with opening the Help Desk tickets for the faculty and staff. So in regard to one-to-one initiative, just wanted to let you know all the students, as you might know already, seven to 12 have been given Chromebooks. They take them home. So in high school, every student has Chromebooks. Just to let you know, we have extra ones. We have extra chargers just in case if a student forgets their Chromebook. But everybody from seven to 12 have Chromebooks and we are doing a lot of repairs but to give our students a lot of credits. A lot of repairs is kind of like easy repairs done by us and they do a very good job taking care of their Chromebooks. I do have to say with the number of Chromebooks we have, about 1,000 kids in the high school. All the kindergarten this year have been given iPads. They also have one-to-one. And all the teachers have larger 14-inch Chromebooks. They've been giving, Megan sent out a survey and basically every teacher asked for one and they were given a 14-inch Chromebook and that also has helped a lot. Now, what's going to happen with the Smart Bond Plan? When it is approved, the fifth and sixth graders will go one-to-one. They will take it home and then we will have enough Chromebooks for elementary schools one-to-one. The difference is in elementary school, every classroom will have a cart of 30 Chromebooks. They will not take it home. It's going to be there. Okay? And only thing, this is not one-to-one initiative, but since I mentioned the Smart Bond Plan, hopefully, I'm hoping that if the Smart Bond gets approved in time, we will start installing 86-inch TVs in every classroom. That's part of the plan that Terry mentioned before, what the classroom looks like. So we're just waiting for the Smart Bond approval, which will be there, but we don't know when, hopefully so. Any question on this? One of the first tasks I was given by Terry was fixing our infrastructure and I don't want to put up big numbers here without, but just want to let you know our internet bandwidth right now is up to 1 gig and we hit about 600 to 700 megabits, which is pretty good. The only thing I want to tell you about these numbers is numbers are not important. The important thing is consistent. So we are like, every day we have about 1,800 concurrent wireless connection and we have wired clients basically means, you know, mostly desktops. And since a year and a half ago, we have updated or replaced 90% of them. And the only thing, obviously I cannot give details, but I just wanted to let you know our biggest mission right now is cybersecurity. They have to be, as I still disline from a guy on TV, he said, you have to be right 100% of the time. They have to be right only once. So we are revamping our firewall and cybersecurity. This is a daily basis. Obviously, if you need more details, I can give it to you in executive session. But that's our biggest mission right now. And I just wanted, again, the numbers, this chart is not to say, oh, look at it. It's just the fact that every day we're getting the same number of the clients, same bandwidth. There is no drop anywhere. So we've done a lot of things like that to make sure that wireless. And the reason I bring up wireless a lot because all the Chromebooks are on wireless in the classrooms. So in the morning, for instance, in a wing, you might have 300 Chromebooks all starting at the same time and they're just working just fine. And this is our internet bandwidth and I just wanted to let you know again, if you look at this chart, it's literally, this is for one day. But every day is the same thing. We hit 600, 700 meg without any problem. Okay? By the way, please remember you might at home, you might have a 200-meg connection and you might say, well, what's the big deal about 600? This is not the same thing. We have all kinds of protection, denial of service attack, monitoring. There's all kinds of stuff built in on this. So it's not that, you know, you just went to FiOS and said, give us a 600-meg connection. It's a little bit more involved. And finally, we use a Help Desk system called School Dude. Actually, 660 tickets, the goal is to reduce that. But I just wanted to mention that our tickets now, they're like, and it says, we also closing tickets. Issues, we are resolving issues with our tickets. You know, somebody calls me or my staff says, I forgot my password. We're not going to say, go open a ticket. But the big thing about this is tickets now are not about my PC doesn't perform or wireless is down. It's about come and take this old equipment out or my projector is bad. So the scale of the tickets have changed. Also, just to give you an idea, the last 30 days, we have fixed about 100 Chromebooks. Some of them are very short. Some of them, we have to open it and fix them. And I just want also to mention that ed techs have been doing a great job. Usually teachers there in the school, other than the high school, because we are located in a high school. But they go around, teachers get to them. They know, teachers know they know the equipment and they've been doing a great job initial troubleshooting and fixing issues with Chromebooks. And that's all I have. Any question, please let me know.
Just something I want to highlight and kudos to Sean and his entire team. Just a brief walk down memory lane. Just over a year ago, we were worried about all of our staff hitting go on their devices when we were streaming. Remember, we were piloting and testing. We were just afraid of every classroom having one device going live for streaming just over a year ago. Now Sean's talking about all those same staff members potentially streaming and introducing over 1,000 Chromebooks onto our network at the same time. So remarkable, remarkable improvements. If we were to talk about one-to-one this time last year, I would have said, you're crazy. But we've come a long, long way. So I did want to highlight that. That is no small accomplishment and we're talking about things that other districts have been talking about for decades with regards to enhancing our instructional programming rather than just being worried about our device is going to work? Do we have the wireless capability? So I just want to make that kudos to Sean and his team because that is truly remarkable to do in such a short amount of time.
Okay. During our visitation committee, I believe we were in a couple of classrooms that had, did they have the 86-inch TVs? There's a few that do and then there's others that don't. So are we going to be trying through that Smart Bond, trying to get then for everyone?
Yes. Great question. We also have some classroom with 65-inch TV and they're all going to be replaced with 86. 65 is a little bit small. To be fair though, the prices have come down a lot. So that's why we go into 86-inch TV. But any place right now, if the projector goes down, we replace it with 86-inch TV. We don't replace it with a new projector and teachers are thrilled with those TVs.
Yeah. I know because a couple of the teachers were saying that they couldn't wait to get the 86.
Yes.
The other question I have is regarding cybersecurity.
Yes.
Do you have someone specifically that's assigned to cybersecurity and checking the?
Yes, I assign myself to it.
Oh, you. Well, then I have all the confidence in the world.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sean, if you wouldn't mind, can you pull Tina up?
Yes.
Yeah. So up next, we have Tina Kake. Thank you, Sean. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
One more quick question. And really more to piggyback on your point, Terry. I wasn't on the board last year, so I wasn't privy to all the details. But I think there was a lot of talk to hit the levels of connectivity that we're talking about, that we're going to have to rewire all the school buildings at a huge infrastructure cost. And Sean was able to make this progress happen without doing that, correct?
That's allowing us to add in the Smart Bond and put that towards devices, allowing us to go one-to-one rather than spending that whole amount of funding just on wiring, cabling, drops and things that I've learned over the past couple of months.
Can I also just add the fact that there is a technology intern, a student who is a technology intern for the district, which I think is a phenomenal way, once again, to give our students real-world experience. You know, they don't just have to hear about it. They actually get to participate, obviously, in not the, you know, password-sensitive areas. But I think that's another great element of our technology department is that they do have a student intern who is a great kid and has been working for the district in the summers for a couple of years too. But that's a great program and I really hope that continues.
Yeah, actually, that's a great point. Last June, I asked the principal, I got the list of the name of the kids who were going to be major in engineering or IT or computer science. And we hired one to four of them. They were all going to computer science or IT and they worked for us in the summer.
And one of those kids was on our committee. All right, Sean, if you wouldn't mind being vanna over there for Tina. Thank you.
Tina, can you hear us?
Yes. Can everybody hear me? Great. Thank you, Sean. Thanks for being my vanna there. So we'll start. Good evening. I'm really excited to share with you tonight the highlights from the Educational Technology Department for the first half of the school year. Sean, can you move to the next slide, please? So tonight's presentation, we're going to talk about the District Technology Committee, the district's instructional technology plan that Megan had mentioned before, the educational technology professional development that we've done so far and examples of the educational technology integration throughout our school. So we're going to jump right into that. Next slide, please. These are the members of the District Technology Committee. As you can see, we have a broad range of stakeholders that make up this committee. As Megan mentioned before, we have teachers, administrators, our Board of Education members and student representation. I would really like to thank all of our members for being part of this committee and for sharing their thoughts and ideas on the work that we do and for all the time that they've put into this. I really appreciate it. Next slide, please. So here are the District Technology Committee goals for this school year. The first project we've been working on is the Instructional Technology Plan that Megan mentioned for the 2022, 2025 school year. It was mentioned before, every district is required by NISIT to complete and submit the District Technology Plan every three years. I'll be speaking to this a little bit more in our presentation. Our second goal is to unpack the New York State Computer Science Standards. NISIT is now requiring that the computer science standards be fully implemented K through 12 by September 2024. This also includes digital literacy as well. So we're working on that. We're starting to map out how this will look for our district. And our third goal for the tech committee is reviewing and updating our digital literacy benchmark that will tie into the computer science standards as well. Can you go to the next slide, please, Sean? So as I mentioned before, one of our District Technology Committee goals was to work on the District Technology Plan. The main focus of this plan are the goals. Each district is required to have at least three goals but can have up to five on their plans. So each goal needs to show the action steps to show how the district will meet each goal. The District Technology Committee team has been working for the past three to four sessions on our goals. Our first goal, we have five. Our first goal, as we mentioned before, Our first goal, we have five, our first goal, as we mentioned before, is to unpack and implement the New York State Computer Science Standards K through 12. Our second goal will be continue to integrate emerging technologies throughout our curriculum. Sean, can you have the next slide, please? Our third goal is to continue to provide relevant professional development for our teachers, administrators, and staff. Our fourth goal is to continue to make sure that our district infrastructure is up-to-date, maintained, to make sure it can continue to support our district's current and future initiatives. Next slide, please. And our last goal is to complete the district's one-to-one initiative. Furthermore, is making sure that we continue to update the one-to-one refresh plan for these devices. And in doing so, will help ensure we have digital equity and access for all of our students. Next slide, please. So once the Instructional Technology Plan is complete, what are the next steps? The Instructional Technology Plan is due to BOSI's by March 4th from us. At this time, they'll review our plan. If they have any suggestions, they'll share them with us and we can update our plan. Once BOSI's has completed their review, our plan will then go to the Mid-Hudson Regional Information Center for review. Once they review, if they have any suggestions, we can update our plan. As Megan mentioned before, our plan is due to NICE, no later than June 30th. So just before I mentioned, one of the district's instructional technology goals was providing relevant professional development. So I'd like to explore that a little further. If you could go to the next slide, please, Sean. So on this slide and the next slide are some examples of ed tech professional development that we've given so far this year. And we have a lot more to come in the second half of the school year. We've had some new trainings that have happened. We also like to review data to help us guide us as well. Some of these trainings that are on your screen are products from the Professional Development Plan Committee as well. Additionally, we're going to be sending out a survey to our staff this week to help gather additional information regarding other educational technology professional developments that teachers may be looking to have. Sean, if you can go to the next slide, these are just some more examples of workshops that we've provided. So lastly, I would like to share with you the whole reason why we do what we do. We love to integrate technology into the classrooms. We love working with our teachers and our students to further enhance what they're learning in the classroom with technology. So I'd like to share with you some examples of that. We'll start with the high school. Sean, if you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Mrs. Litchin is part of our educational team and she collaborates with teachers at the high school. On this screen here, we have students in the environmental science class learning about wind speed measurements from the ocean. Mrs. Litchin worked with Mr. Goodwin's class to help create a simulation of wind speeds from the ocean using a microbit that radio transmits the collected data to Chromebook. So here you'll see they have a fan set up and on a piece of paper right behind the fan, they have that little black dot is the microbit. The microbit transmits to the picture, you'll see the picture on the left, to a Chromebook, to the data for students to analyze. And the little heart that's blinking in the middle of the screen, that's the microbit. They're very tiny. So Sean, if you can go to the next screen, I want to show you this in action. If you could play that video for them, please. So this is the simulation in action. The students, once the students had their information or data from the microbit, they had to graph their findings. Next slide, please. Continuing with the environmental science class, on this slide, we have students working on their solar panel projects. So the students were learning about solar, solar environmental science class. They had solar kits to help them build their houses. The kit included two solar panels, a light and a fan. The students had to build their houses out of cardboard and install the solar panels on the roof of their houses. The students also added lights and the ceiling fans into their solar homes. Mrs. Litchin showed students how to incorporate servo motors and microcontrollers that helped move the solar panels to follow the sun. The solar panels then powered the lights and the ceiling fans. So the first video on the left, Sean, if you can play that, that's a student working with a servo motor, just testing it out before he installs it, the solar panels on his roof. And the second video, that's with the ceiling fans moving and some of the houses, the lights on. And then you'll see at the end, there's one house that they were continuing to work on to figure out what the issue was of why the fan wasn't working. Sean, can you go to the next slide, please? So here you'll see students learning about animal and plant cells. To help bring these cells to life, Mrs. Litchin incorporated augmented reality or AR into the lesson. She used an iPad, a merge cube, and an app called S.A.L.U.R., AR for augmented reality. The app recognized the merge cube. Picture on the right, you can see a student holding the merge cube and the other student using, holding the iPad. So the app recognizes the merge cube and that brings the animal and plant cells to life. So Sean, if you could play that video on the left, this is a video of showing the cells becoming 3D with labels.
Cover. Remember, we talked about how it lets up selectively in and out of the cell. Mitochondria, this is what it's going to look like. This is the source of all cellular respiration in the cell. Which one did we do? Vacuole. So, storage. It's on, on here. Yeah, but it can't be on both, otherwise you'd get the feedback. So our centrals, these are what they're going to look like. Remember, we said that these aid in cell division.
Hey, Sean, can you go to the next slide, please? So continuing our work with the animal and plant cells, on this screen, you'll see Mrs. Litchin collaborated with Mrs. Clayton to use an app called Quiver. The students colored on the screen, a piece of paper, their animal and plant cells. Once they finished coloring that in, they held their device over the paper. It then launched the Quiver app on the iPad and turns the animal and plant cells into 3D images. And Sean, if you can just show them that video too, please. Okay, Sean, can you go to the next slide, please? Mrs. Litchin also collaborated with a bunch of teachers using virtual reality. One example of virtual reality that we've done in the classrooms is taking the students, when they're learning about the Holocaust, to different areas that they can see and actually walk through the areas. Students in Mr. Fanning's class used this technology as well for virtual field trips to Gettysburg and the Ford's Theater. And other teachers also use this for the Lewis and Clark Expedition as well. Next slide, please. So the picture on the left here is an app called Virtual T, like a T-shirt. You can take a T-shirt and have a QR code on it. Mrs. Litchin collaborated with Mr. Zatola and Mrs. Clayton's class on this technology. Students in Mr. Zatola's class saw the circulatory system come to life as they learned about this topic. Students in Mrs. Clayton's class used this technology to bring to life the digestion process. So students saw the digestion process come to life as they followed a raspberry and through the mouth and throughout the entire digestive process. There's two ways that the students could view. They could scan the QR code on the shirt or also the picture on the right as well. And it brings everything to life as if you were in the body. It's really cool to see. Next slide, please. So the high school recently received two new 3D printers from a grant. The 3D printers have already been put to great use. Students in the STEAM club have been learning about 3D printing and uses for 3D printing and way, way more. Additionally, Mrs. Litchin and Mr. Zatola have created math manipulatives to show equal internal volume using 3D shapes that were created using the 3D printer. Additionally, they created chemistry dice with different elements from the periodic table, Mr. Mayer. The chemistry dice were used in a chemistry game to help the students further their understanding of different components of the periodic table. Next slide, please. So now our journey takes us to the middle school. And at the middle school, Mrs. Schweizer and Ms. Jados have been very busy collaborating with teachers and students. Here you'll see students in Mrs. Fane's class quoting the solar system. Students were able to code each planet to orbit around the sun at the proper speed and rotation. For this project, the students used tinker.com to complete this project. Also, Mrs. Schweizer has been meeting weekly with our students in the success class to ensure that they also have the opportunity to participate in STEM-based activities. They've been exploring different apps on the iPad that help promote social engagement. They also participated in the Hour of Code and most recently, they were able to travel anywhere in the world using green screen technologies. And speaking of the Hour of Code, the middle school had over 500 students participate in the Hour of Code challenges. The Hour of Code is a nationwide challenge during the first week of December that students participate in learning about computer science and how to use different computer science languages. The fifth and sixth grade students mostly stick to block coding, but this year, the seventh and eighth grade students worked on Python and Java. Both languages are, are two of the top computer programming languages that are currently used in the real world. Let's see. Also, Ms. Jados and Mrs. Schweizer have been working with the seventh and eighth grade students to help them take care of their Chromebooks. As Sean mentioned, now seventh and eighth grader, one-to-one. So they've been working with all of those students to help make sure they know how to care for, for their Chromebooks and keep them safe. Lastly, for the middle school, Mrs. Schweizer has also collaborated with Mr. Pickell's class regarding 3D printing. So they were introduced to that there. The students were introduced to 3D modeling on Tinkercad. Sean, can you go to the next slide, please? So our last stop on our educational technology journey is our elementary schools. So here, Ms. Correa and Ms. Jados collaborate with our elementary students and teachers. On the slide here, you'll see our students working with Ozobots. You can see in the picture on the right, a tiny paper here, the Ozobot is inside of that. So Ozobots are small robots. Students program these robots using different color markers. The Ozobot knows to follow the thick black marker line and the students use a combination of red, blue, green, and black markers to instruct the Ozobot to do different things like spin around, go backward, slow down, speed up. Sean, can you go to the next slide, please? And on the slide is just an example of the different coding techniques that the students learn to move the Ozobots around with this. You can go to the next slide, please. Another rope that we like to incorporate into the elementary schools is the dash bot. Here's a picture of the dash bot. Students instruct the dash bot to move using the dash bot app on an iPad. Students use block coding to build commands for the dash bot. So block coding are separate, simple instructions that programmers, they're coded with. And the picture next to the dash bot are examples of block coding. Next slide, please. So here is our dash bot in action. Students are working on a project called Division Dash. And the students had to incorporate their knowledge of division, dividends, prime numbers, potions, all of that. Once the students completed their division portion of the lesson, the students then programmed the dash bots to move underneath the quotient and prime numbers. You can see the students programming here with the picture on the right and the dash bot behind them with their numbers on the floor. Next slide, please. The dash bot has a few different add-ons that we like to incorporate. One add-on is the orange plow on the picture on the right that you can see in between the students. The students need to figure out how to code dash to plow all the snowballs and pile them in one area. Next slide, please. Now let me introduce you. This is BeBot. BeBot helps our kindergarten and first grade students learn about computer programming. So on this slide, students picked a task card that had a number on it. They then had to use the BeBot to find and identify the corresponding number of insects on the mat. Mrs. Correa collaborated with Mrs. Till's kindergarten class for this project. Next slide, please. So during our holiday season, our ed tech team likes to transform the BeBots into reindeer. Here we have our students engaged in reindeer games using the BeBots. So the picture on the left, the students were creating gingerbread mazes and had to code their reindeer bots to move through the maze and collect candy along the way. And the picture on the right is the students building a tower. Their job was to build a tower and then program the BeBot to knock the entire thing down. And we have some videos of that in action. Sean, can you go to the next slide, please? And play the video? So it takes time to learn how to program the BeBot, the Ozobots, and dash. And one thing that's really important is we teach our students to never give up and to always persevere. Another video that we have, Sean, can you go to the next one? The students incorporated BeBot. The students.
The Statue of Liberty.
It's on their way to the Statue of Liberty. Okay.
So in that video, the students were programming the BeBot to make it to the Statue of Liberty. Ms. Jados have been working with the kindergarten students to help show them how to bring their drawings to life with animation and voiceover. Sean, can you go to the next slide, please?
Going to the Statue of Liberty.
They are utilizing an animated drawing website, an iMovie, to transform their drawings and moving and talking characters. And this lesson goes hand in hand with the storytelling and characters unit that kindergarten has been learning about. So Sean, if you could just show the videos that the students made. So I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be able to share all of this with you and for all of your support in the Educational Technology Department. And if there's any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Well, I was just going to say, from back in the day when the district first started doing the computer coding, summer camps, to see that the extension and the far reach that has happened since then, and that was, what, four, five years ago, not even, is amazing. And it's, you know, the ed tech department, the teachers that we, the additional ed tech teachers that we put in our budget last year to hire a couple more, it's obviously that their benefits are just far-reaching and that so many more kids are being able to get hands-on experience. And again, I'm a big proponent in, you know, school teaching is great, but if you don't have the practical applications under your belt, kind of, it doesn't really mean anything. And the fact that these kids are all getting the opportunity to do all these real, you know, 3D printing. I mean, I teach at Mount St. Mary's. They have courses on 3D printing and our kids are doing it in the high school and in the middle school. I just, you know, the benefits, you can't say enough about the technology and the ed tech group are creative and just so hardworking and amazing. And they inspire the teachers too. I ran into a teacher right before Thanksgiving who a few years ago would never have thought of doing anything with technology. And she was creating with her class a Thanksgiving Day Parade using Ozobots. She had a big bag of balloons that she was bringing into the, into the second grade. And I mean, just an amazing, you know, an amazing transition that happens when you have the, the the ability, the people who are interested, the people who are motivating them and actually, you know, the actual elements. So thanks again to, to all you and your, all of your hard work and it's, you can tell it's really going far. So thanks.
Tina, are we going to be having a tech fair again this year?
We're working on it. Last, the last couple of years, we've kind of, with COVID, we couldn't. I think, I believe we're on the schedule to do so. We're planning on it.
I can jump in there, yeah. We have that and also multicultural night are planned tentatively. We really have to wait and see where we are at that point. But in a best-laid plan, yes.
Because I might make a suggestion that we do it on the night of, make a board meeting at the high school and do it at the night of a board meeting. So that we can all see what's going on and then go into the board meeting. Just a thought.
We just have, it may already be scheduled because we plan all that in June, but we can look and if we can make that happen, absolutely.
Or we can all just go.
I'm being realistic.
The science expo was outstanding.
Our tech fair has grown. Our tech fair has grown so much over the last few years. I think the last time when we were able to have it, we had well over 500 people attend. And the students love sharing with everyone what they're doing.
And if I can add to that, too. Tina, you were the first one to bring the tech, the tech fair to the district. I mean, as far as like the county is concerned, Tina came up with the idea, she started it, and then within the year, there were a bunch of other schools that were doing it as well. So it's a, it's a great thing, and it's phenomenal for the kids to be able to show everybody else what they're doing and, and kudos to Tina for coming up with the initial idea.
Can I just add the, I commend everything that we just saw. I think one of my personal measures of like whether my kids or kids in general are getting a good education is when they start learning stuff that I personally don't understand. And I didn't understand most of that, so I think that's a good sign. So thank you.
Tina and Sean, thank you both so very much for sharing all of this with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to scoot back to Brendan for his committee update.
And thank you for patiently waiting for me to get here. Yeah, so just a few items on the Communication Committee. We will be having our first meeting of what I'll call Phase Two as we go into the final spring push for the Capital Project. We haven't set the exact date on that. They were initially shooting for next Tuesday. There were some conflicts, so we may push it to Wednesday, but once that's finalized, we'll get that out to all the relevant channels. I'll let Linda know. In the meantime, we also are, as the Communication Chair, I'm going to be meeting with Terry, Harvey, Walter, Tetra Tech, and Palumbo Group, and our, the PR professional that we've enlisted from Bosse's on Wednesday to start the ball rolling on, on some of those activities. That'll be a lot of the, on the print side as we get stuff, materials out to the community. Also, start talking about our video series so that by the time we meet next week, Tuesday or Wednesday, we're going to have all that stuff already moving and we can make some real progress putting events on the calendar and really figuring out what our message is going to be. To that point, I'd actually like to extend an invitation to every board member, really everyone at this table, prior to our meeting, our communication meeting, I would invite you, if you have, we've all been hearing things around the community and, you know, we've all been taking in questions from a lot of different people. If there are things that you feel like would be useful for the Communication Committee to know, perhaps just thoughts that you have about ideas for how to message the Capital Project, please email me. I would, you know, get that to me prior to, I would say, let's put an end of day next Monday, so a week from right now on that, and I'll send out a reminder email to everybody. It would just be good to, obviously, we are a committee, but we want to make sure that we're taking in as much of the information as possible. And there will be many more to come, but I think that's about it for now.
Thank you, Brendan.
Brendan?
Yes.
As far as the PR person, that comes from, I turned it on. That, that, that comes from free of charge from Bosse's, correct? Is that a service or did we pay for that?
Aliteria.
We pay for it, and it's part of the Capital Project complete package, so.
That, that's, that's basically what, yeah. Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our second opportunity for recognition of visitors. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to come up to the end of the table, state your name, and please use the microphone. Anyone wishing to speak at this time?
Testing? Oh, great. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And I'd like to ask all the board.
Anthony, please state your name for the record.
My name is Anthony Incano Cornwall. I'd like to ask the board members if all of you received a copy of the letter that was sent to the board through the president from that document. And she is one of the scientists from, from Washington, has been studying all this problem of the artificial turf. If you don't have a copy, I'd be glad to mail you one. You need to realize that artificial turf is true. It has been around in a lot of schools. However, no one knew the dangers associated with it. People start researching and keeping track of how many people are getting sick with cancer. This started only in 2009 through 2015 when Amy Griffin kept a list of all the people that are getting sick. She cared about, about her athletes, goalies, coming out of college, getting sick, getting cancer. Why? Fifty-six by the year 2015. But recently, she has 270 kids. So she came out and pleaded with the medical community, and she said, "Look, I'm only a soccer player. I'm not that smart. I don't know why the kids are getting sick. Please, someone needs to find out." That's why all the schools all the way around us, they have artificial turf. They didn't know what they were getting into. Artificial turf is going to be the next asbestos. Remember tobacco? Asbestos, would any one of you would like to have asbestos in your home? No. So you need to think quite a lot. And if you don't have a letter, I will make sure you get one. It was addressed to Mrs. Brian. I don't know if she forwarded to you. I know I've been speaking about it, but you don't want to hear from me all the time. You want to hear from an impartial scientist. And I believe Mr. Cashman put in his, in his paper already. And Mr. Zuckman offered to speak to the board remotely from Washington if you'd like to hear from her. And I think Mr. Cashman also will tell you that he should have received a, an email or an offer. She's willing to do an investigation by phone with her. You don't want to hear from me. This is an impartial scientist, and she's so dedicated because she's a mother. And she cares about the children in the nation, the whole nation. So I don't want to prolong this, but as far as the presentation tonight, I just came from 230 miles away from Pine Grove, Pennsylvania, because they had some issues there, but they need engineers, they need mathematicians. If our country is to survive in our competition with China and with Europe, you need to educate our children much better. Remember, New York, Cornwall is doing a terrific job, but as far as a nation, we have 46 worldwide. Europe is ahead of us. The math teachers, they know who is the brightest kid in school, Indian, Chinese. I've seen it. I am in the industry and I see them. I see the way our people work. Every single American job has a target on worldwide. If we don't wake up and keep our children healthy and safe, we'll be in trouble. One less comment, then I'm done. I'm sure you guys are happy to hear that, right? One of, one of the, the natural grass are the best field in the surface. There is no problem, there is no sickness with it. I know the problem we're having, that multi-use field, you can, you can pull a lot of teams over there, but think, we can have two grass fields, one in the middle school and one in the high school. That solves the problem. If anyone would like to have more information, you want to meet with me, I can show the mountain of evidence that I have. And Mr. Superintendent, I did send you an email. If you give me an email and you have mine, I'll give you all the information you need. The key to it is, we all want the same thing. We want to keep our children safe, okay? We don't want them associated with asbestos. I just told you one thing. Everybody, everybody knows about the water problem in Newburgh, right? Can't drink that water because of PFAS. Do you know what the target, the limit for the, from New York State is on drinking water? Ten parts per trillion. You know how much their reading and polypropylene is and polyethylene, which is the, the blaze of the grass? The reading is between 255 and 455. Now, the kids are jumping and falling down in all that junk, and they're getting that stuff in their mouth. How do you think they're going to feel? They're not going to hit them right away, but when they come out of college, they'll have cancer. Thank you for listening to me and looking forward to be talking to you quite a lot.
Thank you, Anthony. Any other comments? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Thank you to our audience members. Thank you.